Calls me, Newer.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Mrs. Robin Margrave of Our Lady of Fatima Church. Or not?
Or not. Lou, you want to give an invocation?
No, I don't think so.
Well, anybody want to raise their hand?
Yeah, but he would raise his hand.
Okay, there you go. Pamela's going to give it, and then please remain standing for Mr. Schwartz, who's going to lead us in the pledge.
In the name of the I Am That I Am, in the name of my Holy Christ Self, I call for the blessing of this council chamber's meeting. Today, I ask that they all be blessed with peace and those things that they give to us so freely and one pointedly. I call that it go out into the world and envelop the world and bring all of her children home, and so that they can recognize the peace and the healing that happens only in this village, our San Clemente Village, San Clemente, California, ZF code 92672. Thank you, dear Lord, for this council chambers. They can do no wrong. They have led us like an offshoot of the Oval Office right here made local. In the name of the I Am That I Am, in the name of my Holy Christ Self, in Jesus' name, thank you, dear Lord, for this, our prayer, the Lord's Prayer, we love.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic which stands under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. That would have been hard to beat. So glad we didn't go with you. That would have been hard to beat.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Potem Ham.
Here.
And Councilmember Doncak and Mayor Brown are absent. First item on the agenda is a toll road update.
We don't have any additional detail here.
I have something that I can announce. The City of San Clemente, we're going to be holding a toll road forum on October 25th at the Presbyterian Church from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and a press release will be following, but I just wanted to get that word out. That's it.
Steve, anything?
No.
Okay. No cards?
And Mr. Terrence Hughes has requested that the next item on the agenda, the Boys and Girls Club Report, be deferred to the council meeting of October 2nd. Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for Oral Communications Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes, which should give his or her presentation. And I have two cards.
Okay, if you could step right up. Our first person is Tyler Bowden. Followed by Tyler will be Matt Willis.
I hope you're doing well. I just wanted to come in, and I haven't been to a council meeting in a while, and wasn't able to make it to some meetings in the past where people have come up and spoken about community choice energy. But it's my first opportunity to get here to do so, and I just really wanted to come in and express my support as a community member for community choice energy. We've seen it in effect in various different municipalities around the state, and it's been very successful so far, not only in reducing rates for ratepayers in each given community, but also in raising funds for the respective cities that they're serving. And it's a great way for ratepayers or municipalities, a city like our own, to choose where energy is coming from, instead of leaving it to investor-owned utilities, but also choosing how much the energy costs, instead of leaving it to investor-owned utilities. Those utilities typically charge between an 8% to 10% margin on the power that they send and deliver to the ratepayers. And as a city municipality, as a community choice aggregator, we would have the ability to choose what that margin is. And of course, with any business, there has to be some amount of margin to maintain, and maybe even profit somewhat. But the beauty of community choice energy is that profit goes right back into the city, and we get to decide what to do with it, whether to lower rates even further, whether to invest in renewable projects in the city to then offset future costs, or even to invest in other city programs and projects that we want to do. So I'd just like to express my support for community choice energy, and really the next step for us is to engage in a feasibility study for that. And I know we're in an election season right now, so it's kind of heated, and there's a lot of different topics to talk about. I'm not sure if this council would want to engage in a feasibility study before the election, but it would be very timely, and I know that we wouldn't regret it. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks for your time. James, when are you going to be coming back, or staff going to be coming back with their report?
Probably not until November.
Okay.
So it won't be the feasibility study, it'll be asking council for next steps.
More informational, correct?
More informational.
Yep. Mr. Willis? And then, Mr. Willis is our last speaker for Oral Communications.
Hi, council. Matt Willis here, resident as of about a year ago, energy consultant myself, and here to kind of back up what Tyler just mentioned with my support for community choice aggregation or energy, whichever one you want to call it. It's good to hear that we're getting a report done. Thank you guys for that. Realistically speaking, putting the choice of energy back in the hands of the people is what CCAs are about. And from a technical perspective, from an organizational perspective, it's something that once, if we establish the boards, the correct boards, the legislative boards and everything else, to build the CCA out and get it in front of the CPUC and get it in front of the PUC, you know, CEC, and start going through the processes to get that put into place, it's not a, it's a timely process. It's going to take us five or six years just to get something like this off the ground from an organizational standpoint. However, once we get to that point, the sustainability and the structure of that moving forward will land in our control. And ultimately, you know, we've had wins across the state, so we don't have to be at the front of the spear tip on this one. So we can leverage what's already out there and what's being done, and try and take some of those applications and bring it in-house. But yeah, mostly I'm just here to support CCAs as a whole, and let you know that if any advice is needed to the council, I'm out there, and we have, you know, I've been on both sides, from the utility side and the private developer side. So, thank you for your time, and yeah.
Well, welcome to the community, and thanks for the information. Do you have any more cards?
No.
Okay.
Could we have a motion wave reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
So moved.
Second, motion by Ward, second by Ham, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes three zero.
Closed session report, City Attorney.
We just have one item to report. There was an item added late last week to the agenda. It was initiation of litigation against the operator and property owner of property at 1402 North El Camino Real. That property is being operated as a retail marijuana dispensary, and that violates the city zoning code at that location without permits. So the council authorized us, we already sent out a cease and desist order, the council authorized us to bring a civil action against that operator and that owner, and we expect to have that done before close of business on Friday.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public requests removal of an item for separate discussion and action. And I have not received any requests for removal.
Second, motion by Schwartz and second by Ham to the consent calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes three zero.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the City Council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first public hearing is a continued public hearing to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision of April 18, 2018, approving a large family daycare facility for up to 10 children, where a small family daycare community currently operates in an existing townhome located at Three Paseo Vista.
Mayor Potem, and council, we assisted the city staff in bringing this application recommendation forward, so I'm not able to sit with the council. As a hearing body on it, we had subsequent council lined up for tonight, but something's happened, so I don't think it's going to have legal complications that require lawyers on either side of it. So if it's all right with you, I'll just leave you to your own devices, and if we get bogged down on a legal matter, then we'll recommend that you continue it until he can be here, but I think you're going to be fine.
All right. Good evening, council members, city manager. My name is Veronica Maronis, Assistant Planner. This is an appeal of the Rasta Large Family Daycare Conditional Use Permit. The operator currently has a small family daycare at this location, which serves eight children. On April 18th, Planning Commission approved the application to allow an expansion to a large family daycare. The applicant originally requested up to 14 children, but Planning Commission conditioned the project to not exceed 10 children. The applicant agreed to that condition at public hearing. An appeal was filed by Susan Banky. The appeal claims that the application submitted contains misinformation and misleading statements by the applicant, specifically pertaining to fire authority review, CCNRs, SEQA analysis, as well as the outdoor play area and ingress and egress of the site. The project site is located at Three Paseo Vista, which is a condominium residence in the Talega specific plan. Both the zoning ordinance and the Talega specific plan allow for large family daycares through the conditional use permitting process. Staff reviewed the application and determined that the application complies with the zoning ordinance, and conforms to all requirements, and meets the required findings for the conditional use permit. The staff report correctly states that the SEQA analysis, the SEQA determination, is statutorily exempt, and the project is still subject to all state licensing review, including fire authority review, subsequent to this approval. This includes obtaining a new license for the changeover to a large family daycare, and should the home not meet the required state licensing, it would be, in theory, denied a license by the state. Staff recommends City Council uphold the Planning Commission approval, subject to the draft conditions of approval, and find the project statutorily exempt from SEQA. Staff's available for questions, and the applicant is here for questions as well.
Great. Next report, you have any questions, staff?
Yeah. What's their child count now, as a small?
Currently, eight is the threshold.
So we're talking about allowing them go from eight to 10?
Correct.
Okay.
The letter that you forwarded to us from the applicant, it didn't have a date on it. Was that a letter prior to the Planning Commission meeting where they conditioned it to 10, or after?
That was prior. That was something submitted.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
Questions to staff, we'll hear from the public? Okay. Open the public hearing. The first person to speak is Diane Stiefel, followed by Diane will be Jürgen Stiefel, followed by Jürgen will be Suzanne Shaw, and the final speaker is Naveed Hirani.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, thank you for being here. I know you guys want to do the right thing, and I do too. And I don't even think we would be here if there weren't so many misrepresentations on the first application on the Planning Commission. Some history, in 2011, they paid cash for this property and signed an agreement that they would not start any kind of business, especially not a business with clients coming and going. So three weeks later, they started a business, 2011. So there are 302 owners. About 30 owners have written to the City Council, asking you please to not approve The cost that we've had in our community because of one homeowner wanting to go against all these rules with lawyer fees, time, your time, the Planning Commission, it's been pretty astronomical. I want to tell you that, I don't know if any of you live in a condo facility, but two doors down, I hear when my neighbor shuts her toilet seat. So I'm thinking, if somebody is home, wants to spend the day home doing their work, but not having clients coming in and out, as which everybody agreed to in our community, they have a shared wall. So the area that they're in, it's like a horseshoe, every wall is attached. Why couldn't they be happy with one to eight? In 2011, they never once came to the HOA facility, the HOA homeowners, and said, hey, we're running a business. They never did it, because they would have not been approved. So then, they tried to get this through. So we've got 188 residents in a 300-foot radius got letters. So if you think about how condensed our community is, if Standard Pacific thought that they wanted to allow 10 more cars coming into a condo area four times a day, they would have built and zoned and planned, obviously, another group of condos. So the way we use our community, because we have this business area right next to us, we have a lot of elderly people that don't hear or see well, they are all walking to the store. We have a lot of animals that are walking to the store, and we have children that are in the middle of the street, the residents that live there, riding their bikes, riding their skateboards, not looking, day and night, because our homes are so small and we share walls, our children that live in our community must play outside. Why can't they be happy with one to eight? They made it sound like they're struggling to have a business since 2011, and they can't possibly run an effective business. One to eight is a perfect amount in this community. I'm asking you to please do the right thing for 302 owners. I'm asking you to please not approve this.
Thank you, Diane. Jürgen, followed by Jürgen will be Suzanne Shaw. Is it Jürgen?
Jürgen.
Sorry, my apologies.
No problem. My name is Jürgen Stiefel. Good evening. I'm a board member of the HOA of the 302 condo units, and it's a really condensed community, and we had a lot of discussions also with the Rasta family. They made false information from the very beginning in their application, and I don't know why this never was really, came up really with you guys, or also with the Planning Council. It's very, very weird. As it was stated before, they have since 2011 a business of a small childcare, and you wanted to approve it for 10 children, and that seems, I think that was your question, that seems a little, well, from eight to 10 doesn't matter. But you have to know, the license that they will get from the state says nine to 14, so they can always have 14 with the state and their license. And how do we control this? I mean, there is no way that we can control it if they have more. So, and how it developed and how they made false representation in the beginning, I don't know. This is something that really worries me. I think that's pretty much everything, but the one thing what I want to ask, why is it that all the time, I'm here now for the fourth time, and I think I was at the Planning Commission, why is it that the Rasta family's lawyer has the last word all the time? It's very funny to me that we talk first, and then he can listen to everything. I don't know if he even tapes us. So why is this? This is very weird to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jürgen. Suzanne Shaw, and then following Suzanne will be David Hirani.
I'm also a property owner in this area, very near to where this daycare center is. The owner, as you can see, and with the information that I've sent you, confirmed at several times that the map that is being shown is an accurate representation of the That's the map that they submitted. The map shows that there's an exit at the rear house, rear of the house, and also shows that exit extending from the property leading through a gate in the fence, and states that this exit leads to a sidewalk that ends up at the street. There is no gate at that location, and there is no sidewalk adjoining their property. The actual exit, this is where they showed the exit is. The actual exit is at the rear of their side yard that's being used as the only outside play area. That little area is their outside play area. Outside the actual exit are trees, shrubs, and trashcans that are actually blocking the exit. This is their second fire exit. They stated that OCFA had inspected the site and had approved it, and you've got their written statement of that. It's not true. They were denied. I went to OCFA, they stated that they would not have even gone to the property, so that was incorrect, and that they gave me a copy of the requirements. The two main requirements, and council has requested that they show some of this information, which they never did. In all of your correspondence, they never show the pull fire alarm. They do not have a clear second exit. They submitted a map of the streets showing the available parking. The, it's going to just take me longer because of this. All those blue circles are areas where there is not available parking. And if you read your emails, I sent a couple of pictures this morning, that I actually took this morning, showing almost every single parking spot was taken during the time that they were going to have drop-off. The area adjacent to their property is a steep hill, so there's, to try to take children out, if they could get through the exit, is going to be nearly impossible. The information given to the Planning Commission was obviously meant to mislead the commission and the City Council. Since they have not given accurate information and can't meet the OCFA's guidelines, I don't see how you can approve a CUP.
Thank you. Naveed Hirani, that's our last card.
Good evening, my name's Naveed Hirani. Just to clarify a couple things, I'm nobody's attorney, I'm just a private citizen, I'm not representing the Rastas. I'm not representing the Rastas. And I'm not taping anybody. I think it's just being taped by itself. Just this background, this has been going on for more than a year. And what we are here to discuss is two extra children being added to a daycare that's been operating for more than seven years without any complaints from anybody in the community. I've come to several of these meetings and the appellants have made statements and we are going to make statements. And from what I have come to learn is that we are going to say things and they're going to say things. And from your position, it can be easy to get caught up in the he said, she said of what is going on here. There is a neutral authority that is objective and has reviewed the facts and has reviewed the law and has applied the law to the facts of our case, and that is the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has spent hours upon hours reviewing every single nook and cranny of our application and have applied the law to our application. And on numerous occasions, they have come to the conclusion that in all respects, we are compliant with law. That's the end of the story here. Every single aspect of this application has been reviewed. And this process has been going on for so long that it's actually been reviewed by several people in the Planning Commission. The individual who initially reviewed this is not even there anymore. So a new person has now reviewed everything and again has come to the conclusion that this is compliant with law. The appellants or the people that before me came up here and said there were false statements made. They didn't actually provide any evidence or provide any specifics about that. The people who are in charge of determining whether a false statement was made is the Planning Commission who has reviewed that. If they had any issue, they would have told us and we could have corrected anything. What's happening here is there's been an application submitted by someone who operates a small business. And that small business is actually providing a very substantial benefit and public policy benefit to the residents of this community. She's not operating a strip club. She's not operating this casino. She's providing a home for children. And her reward for doing it the right way and for just wanting to add two kids, going through this process, complying with every single thing that's been asked of her, is to now be dragged through this rigamarole of months and months of he said, she said. All I'm asking you to do is look at the objective neutral authority who has reviewed this and take their word for it. You don't have to take mine and you don't have to take the other side's. You can look at the Planning Commission's reports, who has looked at this and applied the law to it, who has gone to the office every single day and done this, and take their decision. I know I have 10 minutes, but I'm just here for public comment. I think the applicant should have gotten 10 minutes.
So that was three minutes?
Yeah, so I'll stop when I'm supposed to stop.
Thanks for jumping on that.
Yeah.
Thanks for comments.
Hi.
So you are the applicant?
So just for clarification, so everyone knows what happened there, real quick.
Yeah, so just to clarify.
Let me clarify what just happened.
Right.
So Navid turned in his speaker card. He spoke for 2 minutes and 50 seconds as a separate speaker, speaking in favor of the Rastas' application, but he was not a party too. So now we're going to hear from the applicant, which they're going to introduce themselves and get 10 minutes.
So this is my mom. She's the daycare provider who's deathly afraid of public speaking. So she's asked me to speak on her behalf. I own the property. He is not our attorney. He's actually my fiance. And he's also a private citizen, the same way that the two individuals before us who spoke are husband and wife. So he does not represent us in a legal capacity. We're not going to stand up here and attack our neighbors. That's not the focus here. We're not going to get into a he said, she said because ultimately, it's going to look like two kids fighting in a sandbox and that's not what we're trying to do. The fact of the matter is, is that if you turn your attention to page four of the Planning Commission's report, paragraph four, it says that the application complies with all applicable provisions of the San Clemente Municipal Code. We've been reviewed over and over again by this Planning Commission, by two separate individuals. And every time, the math adds up to the same solution, that the project should be approved. And it should be approved because it's compliant with the requirements and the city ordinances. These are neutral parties. We didn't hire them on our behalf. The black letter of the law is the ultimate authority here and we're asking that these facts be taken into account. The state makes the decision about exits. They make the decision about whether or not we have enough fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide detectors, locks on the door. We're not done after this gets approved. The state inspectors and the fire authority have to come in and make those determinations. And no, the fire authority has not denied anything because they're waiting for this CUP decision so that they can move forward. They can do their inspection. And the state inspectors ultimately come in and do those inspections in the very end. And they ultimately decide whether or not to give her a license. So it doesn't end here. In terms of, well, there's, this is a business and it's causing traffic and parking, the City of San Clemente has issued more than a dozen business licenses to businesses in our community. There are dog walking services. There are printing and shipping businesses. There are at least six real estate agents. There are luxury car dealers, all who work out of their homes in our dense, as they say, community. We're not the only business here. And we're only asking for two more children, and this has led to all of this. We've been in this process since December of 2017. The Chair of the Planning Commission came to our community. We didn't know that he did this. He revealed that on the day of the meeting in April. He came on six different occasions for an hour each time during different times of the day. And he observed traffic, parking, and noise. And he determined that there was no issue with traffic. There was no issue with parking, and there was no issue with noise. We didn't know he was here and they didn't know he was there. He showed up to see for his own eyes, in reality, what happens every single day, and those were his determinations. Our HOA president isn't here because they dropped their appeal after we had that meeting. The partner of the law firm who represents our HOA had a meeting with us. Mr. Jurgen was there. He was the only board member who was against it. His wife was also here speaking today, as is their right. But they were the only, he was the only member of our HOA board who was opposed to it, which was his right. But the majority decided to drop the appeal. The partner of the firm was there and so was a second lawyer, and they determined that they were not going to pursue it. We are wondering, when is enough at this point? We're here to answer your questions. We respect the democratic process and all those things are true. But ultimately, there's so much red tape that comes into play here because it turns into a he said, she said. We understand we have neighbors and that they have concerns. But the reality is, is that the woman who filed this appeal and the individuals who just spoke live outside of the 300-foot boundary that the City of San Clemente has determined that is required when they send notices out for public hearing. So they have their separate entrances to the community. They have their separate exits. They don't directly clash at all with where we live or where we are. This is not an amusement park. It's not a school. It's two more kids. To the point that this home was paid for in cash, that's irrelevant. To the point that we never came to the HOA because we were somehow doing something shady, that's not true. When you have a license for eight children, you don't need a CUP. But the minute you decide to increase that number, that's when you need one, which is why we're here. And the HOA was always aware that we were running a daycare. We had those conversations through our Realtor when we bought that house. Nobody pays however much you pay for a home in cash only to have this, run into this problem afterwards. And if businesses were such a problem in our homeowners association, there wouldn't be more than a dozen of them with business licenses with the city right now. There's also a point raised that if you approve the CUP for 10 children, ultimately, the state gives us a license for 14. If we were ultimately going to get a license for 14 children, why on God's green earth would we go through this entire process, spend thousands of dollars? Because we're paying the city the money and their time that they're spending on this. They're spending a lot of time putting this together, the Planning Commission, I mean. Why would we go through all of that only to not follow the CUP in the end? How on God's green earth does that make sense? We're asking that the law and the ordinances and ultimately, the recommendation of a neutral party be taken into account here. We're not asking for special treatment. We've been to the hearings. We've complied with the rules. Down to the very last carbon monoxide detector has been installed. And ultimately, when this, if this CUP goes through, the Orange County Fire Authority needs to come by. They need to do their full-on inspection. And as I mentioned, the state comes and does theirs. This process doesn't end today. We're asking for this to be looked at from an objective point of view. And it's, sometimes it's difficult to see that when you have so much noise in the background from people who are presenting information that's just not true. If it wasn't true the first time, someone would have caught it the second time. We're here to answer your questions. We understand that there's a time limit. We can't just call out or shout out and all those things are fine and we agree with that. But we're asking for you to at least ask us if you have a question because nobody knows this application better than we do. And it's been many months. It's been a lot of work and a lot of time. We want to thank the Planning Commission for all the effort that they've, all the research they've put into this outside of us to try and fully make sure that all of these are compliant. Finally, with parking and issues of the HOA, the HOA had a private meeting with us, as I mentioned, with their attorneys. They decided to withdraw their appeal. And they've determined with us that in terms of any issue that they may have, that their attorneys would be in direct contact with us. So at this point, it becomes a matter of neighbor versus HOA. And it's unfortunate that the council of a major city in Orange County is now getting dragged into an issue between neighbors and their homeowners association. That's also another part of it, the way that we see it. We're happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you for your time.
Have any questions of the applicant?
I have a quick question. When you first opened up, did you contact your neighbors and tell them what you're doing and come up with some parking instruction for your, for your, wait, let me finish. For your parents that you could share with your neighbors that they knew how the drop off was going to go? Did you, did you do that?
Yes. The answer to that question is yes.
Okay, so explain to me how you do your, how do you instruct your parents on the drop off?
So the parents are all, they go through sort of, I guess it's an orientation type thing before they bring their children. And my mom goes through, of course, all the state requirements, you know, the typical, the vaccines that the children need to have, everything that you would imagine when you take your child to school, for example. The state requirements are very similar to that. Then she does sort of a walkthrough and shows them where they're allowed to park, goes over the speed limit. We've had issues in our homeowners association with ride share apps and Uber and these types of things where people are kind of speeding on the roads. That's been a concern. She goes over speed limit requirements with them. She goes over where to park. They're not allowed to park in the, there's a designated area for residents, which is kind of like, you know, like in the driveway almost. And then the parking on the street is separate. So they're instructed to not park in resident parking, so in other words, along the street. And that's the way that they are told how to do it. And I mean, these parents are Tulega residents. I mean, they're familiar with, you know, I mean, there's a speed limit. You can't just speed on the road. Some people walk, which is another point that we wanted to bring up, is a lot of these families walk because they live in that same area. And so they, they'll just walk and bring their kids. There's no issue with cars. Some of these families have multiple children in one family who are enrolled in the daycare. So when we say 10 kids, it's not really 10 kids every day. I mean, yesterday she had three. So, you know, it's just to give her more flexibility. And some of these parents, like I said, have two or three kids who are part of the same family. And that's the way that they do that.
What drove you to want to increase it? Because what I saw in the report was that you had to turn people away.
That's right.
Is that the only reason?
Yes. There's a need for it in our community. It's just a grow, I mean, San Clemente's been so wonderful. It's also been growing. So she's had...
Plus sometime, like one of the mom has like, I have an extra emergency or something. I want to have it, but I want to do it by a rule. I don't want to take, you know, one more because my license. That's why I want to do it. Like I have flexibility by it. That's why I did. Honestly, if I was thinking about this going to be that, you know, headache, I was like, I didn't, I want to do it the right way. I don't want to, you know what I mean?
So she, in other words, it's the flexibility of knowing that you can, you know, if a parent needs to drive, I mean, she's had parents where she's like, look, I can only take one of your children, not the other one. I don't have space for the other one. You know, it's, it's, this is not a corporate machine. It's a very personal, family-oriented environment. And these parents become family to us as well. Their kids, to a certain age, think that my mom is their mom when they're young. And so, you know, the parents build these bonds with her and they say, look, you know, we're, we want to have a second kid. Are you going to be able to, you know, care for our child? And she'll say, look, I don't have space. It was coming from that place because ultimately, two more kids doesn't make a huge financial difference. It's not about the finances. It's about the flexibility.
Does somebody live full-time as a residence, one of the three of you? Okay, as long as, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
No questions, applicant? No questions for that.
Okay.
No questions?
Yeah. I do have some questions of staff, though, just to follow up on what some of the speakers spoke of. So Frank, if you could step up. So I'm just going to go down the list here and hopefully we can address all the concerns. The first concern I heard was that the state's going to give them a permit for 14. How do we control that and ensure that it's only 10?
So if the state issues a license and they cap it at 14, they still have the entitlement of the conditional use permit, which is what the city requires in order for the use to operate. And if they were to violate their CUP, then their CUP would be void and that would...
So somebody who lives in the community could call code enforcement, just like they would for any other issue?
Correct.
Okay. Someone mentioned some exit concerns where exits addressed by staff when...
Exits are not a part of our zoning ordinance review. They're an OCFA.
Perfect. One of the issues that I have, and you know, we don't get a lot of business licenses, home business licenses coming to council, but I do know one of the issues that staff looks at is traffic concerns. So explain to me at what point traffic would be too large and staff would say, you know, we're not going to allow this type of business in a residential zone.
So as the applicant stated, I wasn't the original planner on this project. And so from the records and the file itself, the project did go through our development management team review, which includes our engineering division. And from that review, engineering determined, as far as I can tell in the record, that there were no traffic concerns. There was ample parking shown. The parking drop off plan was sufficient. There are conditions of approval that limit the drop off time to a specific amount. And that was used to mitigate for traffic.
Okay. And how many complaints, if any, have were received for this business?
Regarding the project itself, there have been several complaints in the ballpark of around six or seven. But code enforcement complaints for the use since 2011 are zero.
Clarify for me, what do you mean six or seven complaints for the project?
Public comments opposing the project, correct.
Got it, got it. Okay. That's my only, only questions I have of staff. I was going to address one more concern from... Okay, perfect.
So, now I happen to live in an HOA. So, you know, and I used to be president of it. So I'm familiar with HOA operations. And in my HOA and where I live, we do have some people that run some businesses out of their homes. But they had to get HOA approval and submit them to the city for their licensing. And the city wanted to have a copy of the HOA approval in order to extend the CUP or the business license. I'm not hearing that we've required that in this procedure. So I see no HOA approval on this additional increase. I do see notice of an HOA approval back in December 2017. Was it a written approval and do we have a copy of it?
So there was an email provided by the applicant from the HOA that said there was no specific issue. It should be an attachment in your report. And additionally, Title 17, which is the zoning ordinance, doesn't have a stipulation for discretionary review requiring homeowner approval. We typically, staff will ask for homeowner approval and to show good faith that they have checked and to make sure they don't run into issues later down the line, like obtaining a conditional use permit, and then have their HOA deny them.
Because most HOAs, it's a violation in the HOA to do business in their residential area unless they get a specific approval from the HOA to do so. So, and I don't want to put the city nor this council in between an HOA and a resident battle. But on top of that, this wasn't black or white, black and white. This was a four-three vote. So, and you had the Chair vote for it and the Chair pro tem vote against it. So, so, you know, this is an issue that I don't think is overwhelming in one direction or another. Me, I would like to see, push it back to planning and tell pl... like to see, push it back to planning and tell planning to require them to get the HOA to sign off on this. And if the HOA signs off on it and if the planning still supports it, I don't see any reason for our council to do anything about it. But I don't want to make a decision in the middle of this and end up in a battle.
Mayor Ham, if I may interject for a second. There are uses in your code that may require HOA approval prior to the city processing those applications, but for child care care facilities, there is not a requirement that the applicant first run it by the HOA. I can't explain to you why in this particular instance, but I do have a sense of why. Both state law and your municipal code indicates that it wants to promote, you know, daycare center in a home environment as opposed to a corporate or institutional environment. In fact, your daycare facilities are listed as public institutional uses. They're not listed as commercial uses in your code. But both, again, state law and your code seems to promote these types of uses in homes.
That helps. Thanks.
Okay. So I'm glad you pointed that out. It wasn't clear, it wasn't a clear consensus on the Planning Commission. They had issues of not being able to make all the findings. And when we do a CUP like this, we have to make the findings that this would not impact the surrounding area. With the home occupation permits, what we've been doing, we're usually very concerned about cars and deliveries coming in and out. In a daycare, what you see is, is there's a pickup, a drop-off and a pickup twice a day. So, and it's a lot of, it's a lot of traffic. What I'm inclined to do, all these conditions and what the Planning Commission found, there was no complaints on the one to eight, on the existing. So it seems to be working. I'm just not sure I can make the findings that anything over, any child over eight, a large daycare, that I think is appropriate for this small of an area. I understand that it's family oriented. That's why we want these family daycares. But I think the one to eight and where they're at is adequate. And I'm not gonna be able to approve over that. I just, I can't make the findings either. And I think we have to finally settle this. I think the applicant was the one that asked for a couple of these continuances. So it's not just the city process that slowed them up. I just think we have to draw a line on it. And with what I see that they have, I think they've been doing a good job at the one to eight. So that's gonna be my position.
Okay. So I heard both of council's concerns. Let me just address some more concerns I heard from the audience before we continue with our subject discussion here. The final one I got written down here is, why does the Rasta family get the last word? So I can tell you from six years of experience listening to public hearings up here, if we do in other orders, we'd be here until cows come home, which, we don't have any cows in San Clemente anymore, so it'd be a long time. So that's why we do it in the order we do it in. It gives everybody an opportunity to speak and we give an opportunity for the applicant, as well as staff, to come back and review or confirm what comments have been made. So it's not out of any bias. It's just the way that it's done to be most efficient. So I ripped out a section here, Attachment Six, it's 918-187832, to Mr. Schwartz's concerns. And it's the HOA legal team approving, having no objection to this. So that's, he's his concern. Before I go down my spiel, I'd just like to say a couple of words on behalf of the applicant, say thank you for your patience on this, as well as the residents of the community, thank you for your patience as well. Everybody has an opportunity to speak. That's one of the beauties of living in the city of San Clemente is we have a process and sometimes that process lasts longer than we'd like it to, but it gives everybody an opportunity to say their piece. Kathy, I'm hopeful that I can sway your opinion here as we speak. I'm leaning towards what Steve said. Two is not a huge jump. We've had zero complaints in the last six years. I myself lived across the street from a large daycare for many years in a condo. And you know what? I didn't have any issues with it. Had this been a subject property where we had multiple nuisance calls, we had issues, we had these people saying that, you know, for the last six years, this has been a nightmare, I'd share a lot of your same concerns. I'm not hearing that from the public. I'm not hearing that from staff. Quite frankly, two is a pretty small number. And I understand what the applicant says in terms of having flexibility. I'm inclined to approve it this evening. I'd hate to see this get jumped down the road again. I know that there's been circumstances that led to this, but it seems to me it's been long enough. We approve the two children and we move on with everybody's day.
I'm concerned that we cannot enforce the two. And yes, they would have their CUP revoked, but it would take the people around them having to count and make a case. And I know what that takes to do. So I'm inclined to not give a CUP that would lessen what a state permit would do. I think we're, I think we're trying, the Planning Commission only approved it on that basis, pretty much, that it would only, they'd condition it. So when the state doesn't do that and say it's only 10, I think we're going beyond what we should be doing.
So I guess my only comment to that, Kathy, would be that just the mere fact that they've come to every single one of these hearings, they said they've come, they would come to, to get two lends me to believe the fact that, I can believe in a face value that they're only gonna do two. They're not gonna risk their license to go above and beyond or to be a horrible neighbor. I mean, they've already created waves within the community in the past nine months. I guess I can make it real simple and ask our legal team, put his mind to work and say, is two to one get us anywhere? Or does it need to be three zeros, being that we only have three people here this evening?
The state law requires that for a resolution, you need minimum of three votes of the council.
Got it. So I'll continue talking to try to convince you of why this is such a great idea, Kathy.
Well, let me ask, let me ask a couple of questions of staff then. What further conditions could we do to condition this approval if we added two more that would help with noise and the added cars coming? Because it may not be the same family coming.
So when staff reviewed the application, they didn't find that any noise impacts would be generated. There is a condition of approval that limits the amount of children that can be outdoors at one time. So that is a mitigation. Additionally, as I stated earlier, the parking and drop-off plan elicits only 15-minute blocks for drop-off and pickup. So there were measures implemented by the previous staff planner and development management team to account for that.
One thing I noticed that other cities had in their family daycare is they don't allow parents to park on the opposite side of the street because they're walking kids across the street. I think ours is silent on that, is it not?
There is no regulation for that.
Okay. So that was one of the concerns that I had also.
Let me interrupt you for one second. I'm a little rusty of this job. So Joanne's leading me here. I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Continue.
So I'm just trying to, I'm concerned that there's 10. Can, could the city council, if they approved 10, could we make any comments to the state about this or learn anything about this? Because to me, this is a small area for 10 children. And I know it's not in our purview, but because it's so small, I'm not sure it warrants a large daycare. You know, it meets the requirements. So the state is the one that's gonna have to go through that, right? And see what the square footage is and all that in the side yard?
Does the state, does the state get a copy of the CUP when they, for the licensing?
I don't know if they do require a copy of the CUP. They will measure or review for required items under state law.
So I'm concerned that giving that is going to make the state approve something that they wouldn't normally approve?
So here's the only thing I will say, Kathy, is that, you know, we've heard from public comment this evening, people that are adamantly opposed to it. As mentioned by one of the speakers, we've gotten multiple emails from different people. We had a resident put up their own money to appeal this process after the appeal was withdrawn from the HOA. We're gonna have very active members of the community that are gonna be ensuring that this business adheres to the rules set forth. We saw pictures, diagrams, emergency exits. We saw all this stuff, just in preparation for an application.
All right. One last thing. Could the, could the CUP be conditioned to where we have a review, if we do have complaints, that we can knock it back down to eight? Is that, is that a hard process?
Yes. You can actually require, I mean, you can issue a permit with a six-month report back to council, you know, so you can do, again, conditional use permit. You can condition it to, for staff to bring it back in six months, one year.
While we're talking about conditions-
Yes.
What about a condition including the fact that they have to have the property actual condition match what they submitted? As far as the gates and locations and all that?
Yes. You can, you can require an added condition that they provide a copy of the resolution of the city council to the state. And to specify in their application to the state that they want 10.
These plans, but these plans that were submitted are how the property is to look. In other words, where they show a gate located, access, egress, emergency exits, everything as shown. And what was submitted to us is what physically has to be on the property.
You can, you can add that condition. I'm not, I'm not sure that it makes much difference because-
We have, the primary contention I heard at the most is, well, they lie because everything that they're showing here doesn't exist.
Yeah.
That there is no fence here, there is, there's no gate here, there's no way they can get there. They got trash cans blocked and everything. So I'm saying, fine. Match what you've submitted.
Yeah, the issue with that, though, you know, and I would recommend against that because the California building codes, and in this case, a fire code, would also be applicable in this situation. And those codes can change every three years. And to the extent that the OCFA, that the state or the building department, you know, identifies better ways to provide safety for the residents and the occupants of the structure, you want to give the building official and the fire authority the authority to, you know, change the requirements to provide higher safety than what you, the information you have before you-
Okay, so what if I adjusted to that they, they have, OCFA has to, has to give a complete, solid recommendation and sign off on its conditions and health, and that needs to be turned in to staff before any CUP is issued?
Well, the CUP will be issued, but you could condition the CUP-
To, to, that has to be turned in to satisfy-
To compliance with the, you know, to the building and fire codes.
Okay. I can maybe live with that. I think as, as long as we have another set of eyes looking at what's going on and we get signed off by OCFA that that, everything safety-wise and emergency exits and everything else are, would work and are fit and are up to code and there's no safety issues, then I would probably support passing.
That with a one-year review, Kathy? Would that be?
I don't even know if it needs a review. I think it's just if there's recorded complaints that it gets pulled up for review. I mean, I don't know if that's a standard thing that we have. I just, I want it in there.
Complaints are verifiable complaints.
That's what I'm saying is verifiable. And that's, that might be the issue. And if we don't get any, maybe just, we do it one year and we look if there isn't any, we just move on with it. But I think verifiable, I mean, that's gonna be the issue.
You know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna keep this thing going past this evening. So in order to get a resolution, or what if we do a three-strikes rule, just like we've done with vacation rentals?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, is what would be our, how would we-
Cecilia, you comfortable with that?
How would we go through a process like that? Because we've just been changing our codes a lot to where we have set rules.
Cecilia Garado-Daly, Community Development Director. If there was a determination after a complaint and an investigation that a condition of approval of a CUP, for example, was being violated, we have the ability to take the permittee through the revocation hearing process to revoke the conditional use permit.
And that's on one infraction?
Yes. Yes. Any violation of their conditions of approval.
And we already have that in place?
We can revoke the CUP. Yes.
Okay. So then I guess I would just state that with the CUP, you know, we would like that the fire authority verify the safety that we're concerned about the exits.
Yeah, and I want to be submitted to staff. I don't want them to review it so that they're comfortable with what the OCFA says.
Right. But I think OCFA will not come until we issue the CUP.
Yeah, right.
So once we issue it, staff will see it. If it doesn't meet it, then that would be, we do want it to bring back.
And if you note, condition of approval number 11 states that if any of the reviewing authorities over the city deny the permit, then the CUP is void.
Perfect.
All right.
Okay.
Then I'll go with that. I just wanted, that's, I want my concern on the record.
Okay. With that in mind, we adopt Resolution 1852, entitled Resolution, City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, Proven Conditional Use Permit, 2017-390, Ross to Large Family Daycare. Request to allow a large family daycare for up to 10 children under the age of six at three percent of vista. That's it. Motion?
Second.
Second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes three zero. Thank you for your patience on both sides.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is a public hearing concerning the 2017-2018 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPR, for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, Cecilia Garado-Daly, Community Development Director. This is the annual review and approval of the CAPR report, which summarizes the city's expenditures, expenditures and accomplishments for the CDBG program for fiscal year 17 and 18. The CAPR requires a public hearing and a 15-day notice period to allow the public to submit comments in writing. The CAPR that's attached to the staff report just summarizes how the city spent the CDBG funds throughout this last fiscal year on housing rehab, commercial rehab, public improvements, and public services. That concludes the staff report and I'm available for any questions.
If there's no questions, I'm gonna make a motion. Okay?
First, oh.
Well, do we have any cards, Joanne?
No.
Closed. I move that we want to approve and authorize the mayor to execute contract C18-52, the Small Enterprise Agreement, county municipality government with environmental systems research institute, ESRI, to authorize payment to environmental systems. Am I reading the wrong one? Did I jump ahead?
Seventy.
Oh, I jumped back, not ahead. Let's do that again. I'm gonna amend my motion to read as follows. Approve and adopt 2017-18 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation CAPR for submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Motion by Ham, second by Schwartz. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes three zero. Thanks for staff for catching that.
Staff's great report. It's really nice. Thank you.
Oral Communications, Part Two. I did not receive any requests to speak.
Oh. I miss you, Machete.
City manager? City attorney?
Yeah, mayor and council, there have been a couple of issues come up about how we're operating the city's review of Public Records Act request. And if, I just want to report for a minute on that, if that's okay. It's an important facet of our new contract with the city.
How do you view it?
Just PowerPoint, Laura. Maybe that's all right. We'll just do that. As the council is aware, if we can just go to the next slide. Thank you. The Public Records Act is, always involves a balancing between government and the sunshine, public awareness and public outreach and disclosure of the public's business. But as against the government and the sunshine goals are also interests relating to privacy and confidentiality. And where it's been suggested in this forum that the city can just make all its records available to the public under any circumstances, we do need with, with staff's help to go really through every record that people want to look at, to look at concerns relating to individual privacy. Once had a city client inadvertently release contact information for a single parent that violated a temporary restraining and protective order for her. And so she was quite upset that that number and that contact information and her address were released to the public. So there's confidential and individual private matters that, that need to be protected. A lot of the work, especially in planning and community development, is a work product of architects and engineers. The city's not permitted to simply photocopy or photograph their work product and hand it out to third parties, probably for obvious reasons. There are trade secrets. The city often receives requests for sprinklers or other contract sidewalk repairs. Those are often businesses looking to poach the customer list of other businesses that we have on file. We're not supposed to release customer lists. And then information relating to informants, we actually have a records request pending right now where the requestor wants to get hold of information, that, records that contain a lot of information about an informant. Attorney-client communications, Laura, if you could show the next slide. As late as last year, in a case decided against the city of Los- Uh, as late as last year, in a case decided against the city of Los Angeles, the California Supreme Court recognized the right of a city council to, uh, confer freely and confidentially with its lawyers. And so we consider that right to belong to the city as a corporation and we, we preserve it ziliously, as do you. Uh, the next slide, um, as the council's mentioned, there's, uh, an evolution in the law lately, a lot of it, that complicates, uh, the city's ability to respond to these requests. As you know, as you know personally, uh, the law now makes your private emails available to the public. Uh, that's, uh, a little bit complicated to implement. Uh, if the city inadvertently waives privileges, then all records relating to confidentiality have to be, um, have to be released. That was that alleged case. And then finally, um, there's, there are some cities that actually prescreen and pre-code every city document as it relates to privacy, as it relates to attorney-client privilege. Uh, these are referred to as sunshine cities because every employee codes every document and then hits it over the net to the public side of the firewall. Uh, your city has, has considered doing this and, and as you can see and as I can read from your faces, that cost would be extreme, uh, in San Clemente's case. Uh, we did a little internal work on this, um, 'cause we sensed that, that the demand for these services was growing across our client base. This is from our firm. Uh, the most significant line is that last one that shows an increase in billable hours from three hundred and sixty-five in 2014 to four hundred percent that time. And, uh, that's gonna be higher this year than that. Uh, the next slide shows the hit on San Clemente, which should be of most interest to us here. Uh, this includes attorney's costs and our estimate of staff time, but your responses to Public Record Act requests and demands in 2017-18 was about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, just July alone of this fiscal year was twenty-seven thousand dollars. When you project that out, uh, that would be three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars this fiscal year, which is clearly unacceptable. The vast, vast majority of that time is spent in responding to fewer than ten requestors. We have frequent flyers who are, um, the, the bulk of that demand by far and above the remainder of the public put together. Uh, here are some, um, examples of, of our frequent flyers requests. Uh, there was ten requests of multiple items that took a hundred and thirty-two point seven hours. That request was so broad that there were twenty thousand hits on the city's IT system. Uh, recently, we was, uh, we've received twelve requests that when you broke them down involved seventy-eight subparts and searches. Uh, three requests that took forty-five hours, fifteen in July of 2018 alone. Uh, here's the one I mentioned earlier. All emails to or from the city council and/or the city manager and anyone they wrote for a fixed period. That was, uh, twenty thousand hits. That request refused to, to narrow the scope of that at all, so we had to go through every email to and from. Uh, our firm, um, has been working with our, uh, forty-six other client cities and some that uses just for this purpose to create an advanced record center. Uh, what it does, uh, first and foremost here is carve out a specific segment of the budget. You know, you did that in approving an amendment to our retainer last month where we are gonna allocate five thousand dollars a month to this, which is a lot, but parse it out to people in, in fair shares so that that effort is available to a larger segment of the public and, and, and it won't cost three hundred and something thousand dollars. Uh, we're trying to assign lawyers and paralegals and staff on the city's side with the capability and experience to do this so they know what they're doing. That creates efficiency. We've taken our electronic discovery staff and trained them how to do Public Records Act requests. So now they can not only do litigation and manage those cases, but also these requests. And then we've cross-integrated with cross-access to city IT, the city clerk and your records specialists. Um, we're rolling this out and expanding it to, to other clients for economies of scale so that, um, it, it costs less per, per unit than somebody just starting over every time. I think that's the last slide, but I wanted to, to present that to you. It, it's come up here. It was part of, of what we scoped with you and, uh, the city manager's office in rethinking our budget and especially as it relates to the eighteen-nineteen fiscal year. That's the end of my report.
What, second reading?
No.
New business?
Indeed.
Okay.
The, this is the downtown sidewalk cleaning item.
Got it. Okay.
The mayor, I might have something after that.
Yeah. Mickey, you wanna speak?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you wanna hear the staff's report first or would you like to speak? It's up to you.
Whatever.
I think we all know what the staff's report's gonna say, so I, I think we're good without a staff report. We'll just go straight to, uh, oral con.
Before, before we move on, I just wanna be clear, uh, that previously the budget for this was eighteen thousand dollars. We talked about budgeting it out of council contingency. Uh, staff has been, uh, obtaining bids, uh, for this project and right now the lowest responsible bid is twenty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
There's still money in council contingency, but I just wanna be upfront with that.
Mickey? Good to see you. Sidewalk cleaning. Wayne?
Thank you, Council. Um, I'm Mickey Rathman, here tonight representing, uh, the Downtown Business Association. Um, as a group, we are very grateful for the support that we receive, um, from the city of San Clemente and our current council in, uh, supporting the DBA's activities, um, and events. Um, we also understand that there are ordinances that require business owners to, um, maintain and take care of the sidewalks, um, in front of their businesses. That being said, um, street cleaning is really important. Um, one of the most treasured areas of our community is our downtown, is our T-zone. Um, and it's really embarrassing how dirty it is. Uh, business owners want to comply, want to help, um, but it's difficult. It's scary. We get all, you know, sort of in trouble. You're not allowed to use water. You can't have any wastewater run into the, um, gutters 'cause it goes to the ocean. So people don't know what to do. Business owners are stymied and frustrated, um, because they want it to be clean, um, but we need help. Um, the city in the past, um, and even currently still listed on your website, um, is that the city cleans it twice a year, once at the beginning of the summer and again, um, in July after our annual, um, street fiesta. Um, i- it's amazing to me that it would cost, uh, the amount of money that it does, um, but it gets dirty. There's gum, there's, you know, foot traffic. We have these amazing beautiful pavers, um, and there's little cracks and stuff gets in there and it needs to be professionally cleaned in a way, um, that meets our clean ocean requirements. And with business owners, um, the number of them that we have and the number that we have that live out of state, it's really difficult to coordinate that and have it be something that's, um, um, consistent and that all areas look good and are a good representation, um, of our beautiful town. Um, so we are asking, um, for the city's help, um, with some cleaning, um, or some additional advice on how we can participate and do it in a way that meets the rules. Thank you.
Thanks, Mickey. Wayne, that's our final speaker.
Thank you, Wayne. Next?
Wayne Aglister, San Clemente. I'm here to support the small businesses downtown, uh, and, and the T-zone and on, in the downtown area. As James knows, for the last three or four years, I've been, um, talking about keeping our sidewalks clean down there. They are disgusting. Um, the, um, after the fiesta, for example, I sent, I should've sent pictures in because, uh, we had dinnered, uh, at, uh, down there and, uh, walking along the sidewalk, uh, we noticed around a trash container cockroaches. Um, it was just disgusting. Uh, and in the, on the sidewalk, you can't even see the color of the sidewalks anymore in certain areas. It's black by the, where the, in front of the community center, it's black. Across the street from the post office, it's black. And right now we have ten restaurants in South El Camino and the, uh, one-hundred and two-hundred block. It's disgusting. It, this is a basic, um, maintenance of our infrastructure. We're not building something here. It's basic maintenance of our infrastructure. Uh, and it's important that we keep it clean. Uh, e- even if you did it twice a year, once after the fiesta and once in the, at the beginning of the summer or something of that nature or the spring, I can't imagine it's costing that much. And for, uh, the merchants to do this on their own, the, it would just be inconsistent and it's just, and that doesn't work. Now, when you go to Europe, you see merchants out there cleaning the sidewalk every day, oozing it down. We can't do that here because of the Water Quality Board. So it's important that the city provides basic maintenance of our infrastructure, which is sidewalks down there. I'd like to find out what, what twenty-six thousand dollars entails, how many times a year and what portion are they going to be cleaning? Also, down at the Pier Bowl, um, the, the sidewalk, in part of the sidewalk, there's also black. So it's not just downtown and the T-zone, it's also down at the pier. It really is bad, terrible. We need to, we need to spruce it up. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Uh, Mr. Bonniget, can you step to the front, please? So, uh, how you ended up with this, I'm not sure, but you're gonna take the brunt of it. So, um, before we start here, I wanna just review a couple things with council and with staff. So I think it was last year we adopted a policy that said every business needs to maintain within five hundred feet of their property any trash or debris left over from said business. Whatever it takes, and I know it's, that's why I said it's strange that you're here, but can you reach out to the appropriate staff member to ensure that we're actually enforcing that regulation? Probably Adam, I would imagine.
I will, yes.
Um, just remind him of that and maybe we can do an initial, um, surge in reminding businesses that this is an ordinance that we can cite. Um, there's a few businesses in town that we all know that, uh, create more of a nuisance than the rest. Um, and hopefully just, you know, a quick blast would get them back on board to doing their own facilities maintenance. The second one, Steve, before I get off the podium here, is, uh, I'm not gonna ask that we implement it right now because I, I'm guessing one person's not gonna be happy with implementing it, but we bring back, uh, for the fiesta part of the business licensing agreement and permitting is that they cover the cost for cleanup after their event, so...
Good idea.
I got Steve's support.
Can I just add to that one point?
Sure.
Really quick? Just that one point. Uh, we do need to review the fiesta. It just seems like this year, uh, it was worse than normal. It almost looked like someone just put barbecue sauce all over everything. And so maybe there needs to be some things of, of code of conduct and, and controlling what you have and picking it up. I don't know. But if they just assume that we're going to clean it after, they, they can't have carte blanche to just make a mess.
Yeah, and it's not unusual to have deposits or have money posted to, to cover the cleanup costs. Um, the bid specs on, on the, or the bidders, the bids that were, that came in on it, that went from eighteen thousand estimate to twenty-six thousand. Uh, do you know how many bidders we had on that?
Two, so far, yeah.
And was that, uh, for a one-time or was it like an annual contract?
It was to mimic the service that we had been providing, which was twice-year cleaning in the area that I described in your report, which is more than just the T-zone. It's El Camino Real from Presidio to Palazada, Del Mar from El Camino Real to Avenue de Victoria, then in the Pier Bowl, Avenue de Victoria, uh, up to the Beach Comer. And then we also added in, um, an option to do this segment in front of the senior center because we were aware of some recent concerns about the cleanliness at that entrance. Uh, twice a year.
All right, so we're, we're talking about an awful lot more of lineage than, uh, or acreage than, than what, just the, the T-zone area.
That's correct.
Um, and the twenty-six thousand covers the cleaning at least twice.
Twice yearly, that's correct.
In a year. So at the, the eighteen thousand estimate that we originally worked on, was that in thinking it was gonna be an annual basis or was it thinking one-time? So we, with the bigger...
By angle.
By angle, okay.
Okay. Uh, so I'm gonna be supportive with that. I'm gonna move that, uh, we direct staff to continue with the bids and, uh, award a contract or if it needs to come back to us with consent, whatever the next step in the process would be. And that we, uh, remind Adam and his code enforcement officers that businesses need to clean up five hundred feet within their business and then that we take a look at our activities permit for the chamber for next fiesta to ensure that they're paying their fair share of street cleanup.
Before I second it, I'd like to add to that, um, that should our bids still come in so high, there's two things that we need to give to the business community. One is if, they can't wash it down, but they, they have these old inventions.
If you can say broom, I'm gonna die.
They're called a broom.
Ha!
And so they, they can sweep up in front and the more, the cleaner they keep the areas in front, the less expensive it is for us to do the major cleaning so that we keep our costs down. And when we come back with the final bids, we may talk, wanna talk about the overage between eighteen thousand to whoever they end up with and maybe we'll work out a deal where we can share the cost with the business community for the increase. We're gonna cover the eighteen grand, but we may want to be looking, uh, there might be a way to work on sharing some of that additional cost on the initial big cleanup so that we get, we finally get that sidewalk looking like it's supposed to look. So I am supporting it, but I'm just caveat on it that, that we may wanna look at these other additional parts to it.
Clear as mud, Tom?
Clear, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Joanne, we don't have to read the account or anything? Okay, thank you.
So, did you get a second?
Do you need to...
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Second readings?
Yes, sir.
Oh, see that, you guys got this all messed up. Uh, yeah, I do. I have council member items that I wanna bring up since no one else wanted to. I know, but I came back, so... Oh, Kathy's got something?
Oh.
Oh, okay, well, we're gonna go straight to me. So there's two things I wanna bring up. The first one is that, uh, I got to meet the Commandant of the Marine Corps, uh, last week. I went in, uh, place of the mayor because he was out of the country. And so this is the Commandant of the Marine Corps. He's the guy in charge. He's a four-star general, Mr. Neller. Uh, he's a great guy. I was there on behalf of the city for the Incheon Landing sixty-eighth anniversary and I got to sit with some pretty incredible, uh, Korean War veterans that had some amazing stories and that served this country very well. Very humbling experience. It was, uh, fun to meet this individual and sit down with the general and discuss some things that are going on at the base, but I thought I'd share that and say thanks, Tim, for letting me step in your place. The second item I wanna bring up is, I'm a little ashamed to say, it's the first time I ever went to the Cabrillo Playhouse, but I went for their comedy night and it was amazing. So, uh, they have the best deal on drinks in town, in case nobody knows. They're free. They just want a donation. So, uh, I'm surprised it wasn't more packed. Um, sold that night, we had a ton of fun and I definitely gonna be going to more Cabrillo Playhouse evenings. So that's my two cents.
Okay, I have one item. As you know, uh, we've looked at and we've done staff reports for historical districts, possibly, uh, downtown and North Beach. Uh, all I'm asking for tonight is that council directs staff to come back with, uh, some type of a management plan of what it would take to implement those. So staff will come back with whatever, look at our reports, whatever needs to be done, how much time it would take, what, how they reach out to the public. That's what I'm asking for tonight. So we initiate that. Do you need anything more, Joanne? Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Everybody done?
Okay, so, um, we're asked, requesting, uh, the second reading of Ordinance sixteen sixty-three, which prohibits possession of open containers of alcohol in public places. So if someone would like to make the motion and read the title.
So I move that we adopt, I'll read the title too. So this title's Ordinance number sixteen sixty-three prohibiting possession of open containers of alcohol in public spaces. I move that we adopt Ordinance number sixteen sixty-three entitled in order to the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending the San Clemente municipal code, chapter nine point zero four to prohibit possession of open containers of alcohol in public spaces.
Second.
Motion by him, second by Ward. All in favor? Aye.[1723.53] So this title's ordinance number 1663 prohibiting possession of open containers of alcohol in public spaces. I move that we adopt ordinance number 1663 entitled in order to the city council, City of San Clemente, California, amending the San Clemente municipal code, chapter 9.04 to prohibit possession of open containers of alcohol in public spaces.
Second.
Motion by him, second by Ward. All in favor? Aye. Passes 3-0. Second is move that we adopt ordinance number 1664, removing language relating to status crimes and to consolidate provisions regarding penalties, administrative fines, and that's to adopt ordinance number 1664 entitled in order to the city council, City of San Clemente, California, amending the San Clemente municipal code to remove language relating to the status crimes and to consolidate provisions regarding penalties and administrative fines.
Second.
Second by Swartz. All in favor? Aye. Passes 3-0. And with that, I move that we adjourn to the next regular council meeting, which will be held on, every time this gets me, the next regular council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 2, 2018, in the council chambers located at 100 Avenue Presidio, San Clemente, California. Close session items will be considered at 5:00 p.m. The regular business meeting will commence at 6:00 p.m.
Second?
Second.
My hands, second.
Aye.
See you.
And you did it by seven. That was good when you started.